Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Um, and I assumed that that document on the boiler that you sent us was related to all of the struggles of last year. I didn't realize it was a daily list of this year's struggles.
That was this week. Oh my god.
Boiler is the key thing.
Don't understand why we're still talking about.
So it's not fixed? No.
Doesn't appear that way, or it's broken.
It was not the, uh, cap.
The issues, I think, I mean, I don't know, but based on the document that I just read, um, the issues are probably fixed, but we somehow reactivated the issues, um, as we tried to. There was the inside tank wasn't drained when the outside tank was drained, and now the pumps they installed last year are no good.
May, the pumps that they just installed in, in May.
All that money we just spent that we were like, well, let's not go to the town, let's pay it ourselves. That money, as of right now, those things, those, those items are broken again.
Right. Yep, because when we had said we're not putting any, anything into those, we're not, we don't want to ruin the, um, new pump parts. Because it didn't make any sense. We knew that we had the water inside the oil and that whole thing had to get drained, but then what they're saying is that when the company came to drain it, they didn't drain the inside holding tank. So there's a day tank that the oil-water mixture went into, and then that wasn't treated and taken care of. So we, uh, the, I guess the components got, were wet, and, um, so when they go, went to go fire it up on Tuesday, it leaked all over the place. It had, um, I have some pictures if you want to see this. It's just.
You should put those in the document.
Oh, okay. The companies that doing the, that's doing the like super subpar work, do they have any responsibility for this? Well, we've gotten to the point now where we're really tracking like exactly what's happening, who's coming, how many minutes they're there, how much of that is there? Just trying to figure out like, what do we act for money to wrap it up?
My favorite moment from your, your itemized from your list was that, um, I really enjoyed how, uh, you said they showed up at, they signed in at 11 o'clock and signed out at 11:09 and went to have lunch in their truck.
I mean, I, I'd say that I don't think there's a person in this town more done with this than I am. I mean, I just, I really can't believe it at this point. So we have another company, uh, Diamond, that somebody, that's what Swift River uses. And so, um, we, I don't know if they got back to us today, but we'll be talking to them soon, but that goal is to have Jamrog finish what they started. He said that he's going to try to go back to the company to replace those pumps, because it's only since May, so there might be a warranty thing, but then, um.
Yeah, it's always since May and they haven't been used.
Weird, right? We had the whole system shut down while we were cleaning out the tank and making it work. Yeah, so. Anyway, I digress. Happy evening, and let's, let's get together.
My word. Okay.
Yeah.
And let's, uh, call this meeting of the Chutesbury School Committee, uh, to order at 7:03. We are, first order of business is public hearings.
We're down two people?
Uh, Katrina's gonna be here.
Okay.
Who else we missing? I'm sorry.
Leah.
Leah is right there.
I'm here.
In my Hollywood square, she's right below you.
Oh. I think I need to change my view. Oh, there, there's the arrow. Okay.
We all are.
Yeah, for right-hand corner. Okay. I'm gonna change my view because that's not working for me.
Think at this point that we could have it, we could arrange this so that all of us appear in the same way and everyone screams, so that we could just make it, you know, but whatever. Um, okay, so public hearings, I don't see any members of the public here. If there are some ghost members of the public who want to speak, speak now. Great. Uh, review of the perpetual calendar. I don't think we need to go over the agenda. We already have done that. Um, what is on the perpetual calendar this time around? We're into October, um. Budget is in an info gathering and goal-setting discussion. Is that still accurate, Caitlin? Close enough. All right. I have no idea what that means. Um, sounds like it's getting ready for an evaluation. Um. We are having our report on assessments and data tonight, which is coming up and very great. Um. Our town is kind of on hiatus right now, I believe. Um, school council and district year-end performance report for the regional, but I, that's what I have. How's that going?
I think I wrote it last year.
I actually, it was really funny, um, when, oh, sorry, go ahead, Suzie.
The town is, um, having a information session on Tuesday, so we are not on hiatus, we are.
No, I was the town, uh, town, the, the news newsletter is what that was.
Okay, yeah, that's on.
Yes.
Oh, Tuesday, 10 a.m. information session. I sent out information packets to many people today. Um, if you want one, I can send it to you, but we're just really hoping we get people to look at it. So when they come on Tuesday, either by Zoom, but hopefully in person, we can have an informed discussion. Anybody that wants that information packet or letter, I'll send it out to them that didn't get it.
And I will try to join, um, Suzie, I'm in class, but I'll see if I can't get, um, some coverage so I can be there, but it'd be virtual that day.
Right, right.
Um. Okay, uh, warrants.
So we have four warrants, uh, two for accounts payable and two for payroll. Uh, for accounts payable, Warren 3009 from October 14th for $9,812.65, and 3010 for October 28th for $29,339.67. Then for two for payroll, 307 from September 29th for $92,146.1, and 308 from October 13th for $93,894.47. We do not have any grants or gifts.
Thank you. Um, Caitlin, would you send me that quickly so that, I'm doing notes tonight?
Oh, sure. It's, um, it's in my director's report also, and I'll read, yeah, I'll share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so everyone speak slowly, please, tonight. Um, okay. So those are grants, approval of minutes for September 18th. 2025.
I move to approve the minutes from September.
Second.
Uh, seconds, okay. All in favor? My, you, I?
Heard I.
Jack, I.
Bonk, bye.
All right, unanimous for those that are here right now. Okay. Uh, unfinished business, updates, capital projects, building, uh, process, and I might ask that we could also briefly at least discuss some of, I mean, I know we just kind of briefly discussed the boiler issues of this week, but, um, I'd like to hear from Anna and kind of talk as a committee a little bit because it sounds like the building committee has a different memory of the experience of this last year than many of us do. Um, and they feel like they were left out in the dark and were not informed. So, um, we are going to invite them to our next meeting, um, to discuss that a little bit with us and try to figure out what sort of communication they would rather have. I don't, I'm a little, I'm a little confused on the whole thing, but, um, maybe that could be part of this discussion as well.
Suzie, you were there too, right?
Me?
You were at the select board meeting a few days ago?
No.
Oh, okay. So I just happened to be at the select board meeting because they were considering a resolution to, um, stand up for democracy, I guess.
Yeah.
And, um, then they had this whole, the, the building committee showed up and wanted to be heard. They wanted to like, I guess, understand when the building committee needed to be involved because they felt like they didn't know enough about the boiler and large expenses at the elementary school when they should have. And they made it sound like the, the boiler issue has been going on for like five years and without their knowledge. So I don't really know what, what happens because I was like.
What he showed up at a select board meeting to talk about the elementary school boiler?
The building, yeah, the building committee came to the select board to say what, how does the building committee function in relationship to the school, basically?
Right. That would have to get sorted out. It's not automatic and it's differently different than the last one.
Ah.
What do you mean by that?
Building committee?
Yeah, the building committee. So Bob would come down and tell, tell Jackie why, whatever he felt was true. It was, and the process of getting information in this town right now is very tangled. There's too many new people and too little history and no institutional knowledge. So what people should all do is take a chill pill and just assume that it's going to get sorted out, but the whole, there's a lot of tension and anxiety and it's not personal to each situation. It feels very generalized and it's like everybody needs to like.
We're just doing the best we can with the information that we have, and I report directly to the town manager. So if anybody feels like they're left out of a loop or the loop needs to look different, I am happy to help. But if anybody else wants to be the boiler queen going forward, I'm fine with that as well. If I never hear about the boiler again, I'm good.
I hear she's full of hot air and water. Um.
Yeah.
But the town administrator is new and doesn't understand the role she would have to link the different bodies together. That's a communication connector. And that, that's still being worked out kind of committee by committee, which is very painful.
Okay, so the building committee seemed to get my impression, and I could be, I could have been reading it wrong. Maybe they were just clarifying so that they could keep moving forward, but my understanding is that they felt like there were large expenses that they didn't know about.
But they didn't have to pay any of them. Like, they told us that we were on the hook for it. We went to finance, the finance committee twice, and we paid out of our own funds for all of last year's costs. Like, I don't understand this, like.
I don't either. I, I just said like, I'm sorry if we haven't communicated well enough. Um, but maybe we can have a conversation and figure out how to make this work better. That's the best I could do.
Cause when I remember, and I don't know Nate, was it Capitals, Capital Plan, yeah, you have your hand up Nate, go ahead. Was it Capital Planning that you went to that said that like, oh, the antifreeze, that doesn't fall under, you know, our purview?
Capital planning is not the same as the building committee.
Right, I know, I understand that, but wasn't, but Nate was trying to rope in the building committee as well when this was all going down. So Nate can, go ahead, talk whatever you were gonna say, but that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, I responded to your email. I reached out to them. I'm disappointed to hear their frustration with us. Um, I reached out to them on March 6th. Um, I had never, didn't hear back from them. I texted members. Um.
Maybe you texted the wrong members. Maybe they, all the committee changed.
But I did, I, I did manage to connect with Stephen Dalmas. And we connected at the very first meeting that I was involved in with Ann and the inspection of the tank. He was at the very first meeting when this all was going down. So they were brought in. I attended the Buildings Committee to find out more information from them in August when they had their meeting and to connect with them. You know, I'm frustrated to hear that. I thought I did a pretty good job in reaching out. I thought I did my due diligence in connecting with them. And, you know, I just feel like, you know, they're, they're being like this parent committee and reprimanding us kids. You know, there was a little condescending during that meeting where they're like, had this big spreadsheet with all these expenses, and they're like, oh, let's just give the money back to the kids. And it's like, no, that's, that's money for the town. Um, that's not kids' money, and it's not play money. And I don't know, it just buzzed me the wrong way hearing this. You know, there's a lot, uh, going on in the town. A lot of people are talking about what's going on in the school right now with the new, you know, cafeteria rules, and there's a lot of grumbling, and I agree with Suzie. I think everybody needs to chill out and calm down. And, you know, we're doing our best, and none of us need to be reprimanded.
Yeah.
Or made to feel bad about what we're doing.
What was your, when you, when you were, the, the comment that you made that in the August meeting, they like, let's just give the money to the kid, like, what was, can you explain that comment a little?
We, we had a spreadsheet, they had a spreadsheet of capital planning projects. I shared it with you guys a while ago.
This is capital planning, not building, yes?
Yes, but this is the Buildings Committee that I attended that had this capital projects. So that's where it gets a little confusing.
Okay.
Okay, I have not had a capital planning meeting yet because of technical difficulties and whatnot. We have not had a capital planning meeting yet. That is in a week or two, or the 30th of October. It's my first capital. So the Buildings Committee had a spreadsheet that they presented that had expenditures, that had accounts, that had these accounts. And we all agreed that that money can go back to the town, that we've come in under budget.
Those were all the projects that they still had open that we had not, that had not been zeroed out, but we had spent the money other than the sidewalk money.
Every, but the 24,000 for the sidewalk money.
Okay.
So, you know, it, it's frustrating. I'm frustrated to, to get that feedback from them.
Yeah. Well, we'll try to, we'll try to add them to the agenda and invite them next month. And maybe they can kind of talk to us a little bit more about what they'd like to see in the future. I'm also unclear, and maybe Suzie, you can answer this too. I'm unclear on why, why they're upset considering the fact that like, I don't, yeah, I don't understand, I don't really understand because it feels like whether they were involved or not, we went to the required places to ask and we dealt with as much of it as we could on our own. Um, I came out of last year feeling pretty proud of us and really Caitlin, um, for the way that that kind of all came together, but obviously there's some people who are feeling a little irritated, I guess. Um, Suzie, go ahead.
So, as I said, this is not personal. This is happening across the town. So what I'm learning is if I have a topic, I put everybody who connects to that topic in the header. Doesn't matter where the money comes from. It just matters that we're talking about a school building issue. And so I would put, um, the, the building committee, the town administrator, um, probably capital planning, um, the school people that need to know, the FinCom, and I think we have to do that until it settles out and people understand where the information's coming from. Um, and it, it isn't because people chose not to, but it is probably important to understand that it doesn't matter where the money comes from, the building is in the Buildings Committee's um, monitoring, being aware, going to the next thing, they're prioritizing stuff. Um, they just need to hear what's happening. And yes, doing flashpoint anger is really not helpful, but it's, I'm telling you, it's happening everywhere. And so I feel one of my strategies now is to send, you know, you could even put the select board in there, because some of those people are going to interact or aside from you. So if the select board hears that the planning, the building committee needs to look at something, they can, they can make sure it's happening, or they can think about it. Um, seems to me, everybody has too much to think about, but I think putting people in the header when you send out notices is going to be part of how we figure out how the information's getting around and getting it to the right place.
Yeah. Caitlin was next and then Nate, oh, yeah, okay.
So I, I think that there is some confusion with the amount of turnover in the past couple of years. We applied for an MSBA project in 2022 in March and for the roof in the boiler. The roof was turned down immediately, but the boiler, we got to the next stage of the process. But, um, the town decided not to go through with the boiler, um, because the, I think there, I think there was a issue with the replacement of some other parts of the system that had just been replaced. And it was going to be more expensive, uh, than just going through the project on their own for the town. Um, but it, it has been, and I applied for, for MSBA and it has been an issue for years.
Okay. What, what has been an issue for years?
Boiler.
Okay. So is the boiler, this is my other question, I guess, because I left feeling like the boiler's all set now, but is the boiler still an issue? Or are we, like, I mean, other than the parts that we know, I thought that other than the jet pump part, the boiler was good for a while to go. Is that not?
It was supposed to be. It was supposed to be. We were guaranteed that was gonna be good to go and, and ready to be started up, um, in, in Au- August, but. So where we are right now is we're waiting to figure out if they are going to get those tanks replaced that they wrecked by putting the, um, the other dirty water, oil mix through the, through the pump. And, um, after that, we're gonna be, I'm looking at doing something different going forward with a different company. Because there should never be this much drama over a boiler. I'm sorry, it's just wild to me. So I think the, I think I hear the problem that it, it happened for a long time. They kept replacing these same parts and replacing these same parts, and I treat the budget like it's mine, and I'm looking at this saying, we're not going to keep paying for you to come and, and service this like this. It just doesn't make any sense. It's the same thing over and over and over again. So I, hopefully we can work together to figure out, you know, what we can, what we could do best going forward, so we can really plan for it. Because I look at the maintenance part of our budget as maintaining the building, not the boilerpalooza that has been happening. Maybe you just need to pull on Anna and yell at them. Um, I don't know. Joe, I don't know. I'm thinking, I think it's not gonna help. I think it's not gonna, but I think a lot of really awful stuff.
Uh, Nate again.
I just wanted to say that, and also, and you may remember the date, but we met with, um,
Frank.
Haley, uh, right away in the town hall. I forget the date, but as soon as this was going down, we met.
I think it was over the summer.
You know, and we also met Shannon, uh,
Yep.
We met with Bob Groves, and he told, he assured us that the boiler, this was a year ago, that the boiler was in great shape. You know, so we've been trying to clue in and we've been getting misinformation. You know, we're the ones who should be at the select board meeting ticked off at everybody, you know?
Not my style. I don't have enough time.
And I, you know, I thought I did a pretty good job getting Stephen on, on board right, right away. I called him on a Sunday. He was there on Monday morning, you know?
Okay.
Um, anyway.
No, okay.
Moving on, can I, can we move on to good news, to good?
Well, well, let's just make sure Suzie doesn't, I don't, I don't know if Suzie had her.
Sorry, sorry.
I just want to say that the MSBA for the boiler, they could provide a boiler that would absolutely not fit Chutesbury. And that's one of the problems of going through a state program. They, and so it looked like the word boiler, but it wasn't what we needed, so they had to back around, but they had done a lot of work and things. I think the problem with the water getting into the tank is the focus of what's been snarling things up now. And it's not, and that's why Bob says it's a wonderful boiler, but he didn't account for the kinds of problems they're running into and how to solve them.
Okay, so sorry, uh, in our spirited discussion, I didn't realize that, uh, Katrina was waiting to be let in, so she kindly called me to let me know she was waiting. Um, but luckily your blood pressure's probably lower than the rest of ours. Okay, um, so we're gonna end the boiler discussion for now, and we're gonna invite the building committee, uh, should they like to, they can come, um, and they can come talk to us at our next meeting. Uh, so let's move on to the rest of this, Nate, uh, other capital planning, building stuff.
I did finally hear, hear from somebody from the Conway School, and I submitted an application, uh, through the Conway School to look at our, uh, redesign of our parking lot and driveway. So that seems like a really positive thing. It seems like a great thing to connect with. They are, you know, they specialize in this kind of thing with, uh, um, town master planning and street scope renovations, um, and they deal with site maps, design plans, action plans, um, public meetings, um. Uh, they keep the cost low, uh, by keeping, you know, they, they, uh, keep the cost low by keeping the, if they have outside clients, they figure out a bill before they bill them, um, figure out a price. They don't pay the students, so, um, it just seems like, uh, they, they serve Franklin County. It just seems like a good thing to connect with, and hopefully they'll get back to us in a timely manner and we can get that ball rolling, because we need this to get the bidding started with a co- contractor to figure out how much it's gonna cost the town in the first place.
Do they have any idea when they would know if we would be able to?
Ace that. As soon as possible.
Okay. Cause I, I know they also designed, um, you know, where the new skate park is in Greenfield, that, um, that old Wilson's parking lot. I know that they've done some of the design work on, on that, which is kind of, it's got two little rain gardens, you know, to split up the, the parking lot.
Yeah.
Seen some of their stuff in the past and it looks pretty cool.
Seems like a good thing to connect with, so I'm glad I did that.
Right on. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah.
Um, anything else, capital or planning related that we need to talk about tonight? All right. Um, so new business and discussion. We have, uh, Amy here to present the MCAS data presentation.
I think Jeremy, we're gonna start with Ann, who's gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
That correct, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's gonna do an overall picture of how we did it at school, and then Amy is going to take a look at our, um, some special student populations.
Okay.
And I think they need to share, can you give them access to share their screen?
My link's in the, in the principal report.
Oh, okay.
Click on that.
Um, so anybody should be able to share now. You guys can even computingly share.
Perfect.
All right, standby.
Thank you.
All right, so. Oh my gosh, it's been so, such a while since I've shared my screens. It's so exciting. Alrighty. And I'm getting exclamation points. I can share my sound, but not my screen.
Okay, well, um, well, I'll share it. Let's try that.
All right, it is the, um, the link, yup, the Canva link, the 2025 state assessment accountability results.
Um, hold on. Yes, maybe. How's that work? Did that, nope, that just looks like a folder.
Nope, you got it.
All right.
Yes.
On mine, it doesn't look like anything. Okay.
There you go. All right, wanna advance to the next slide?
I'll do my best.
You're doing great. You can just arrow it with your keyboard.
Yeah, no, I'm, it's, I got a bunch of problems, but I'm on a Windows computer and I'm not usually, um. I watched a really funny, like, one of those board teachers yesterday, thing where he's like, trying to explain what Chromebooks are to people who aren't in education and like, imagine a laptop that doesn't work. Um, right, there you go.
Okay, so the first part of the, um, MCAS data that we're gonna look at is the accountability score. So yeah, if you, I go ahead there.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, you can go to ours and then I can talk about it. If you want to, then you can look at it. There you go, number three, perfect. Um, so you'll see that our, we are our own district, so that's the, anytime you see the district Chutesbury, it's us. The, um, the high school information does not factor into our accountability score. The accountability score is determined by targets that are set by the state. And so, um, you might notice, like, if we just want to go right through the, from the top to the bottom. Um, it says our overall classification, that's like the big part. It, we're not requiring any assistance or intervention. So, um, if you continue on, we're meeting or exceeding our targets. Uh, I think in Shannon's report, she's gonna talk about, about the award that Chutesbury was, was given, and we were recognized as one of the, um, top schools. One of the, um, top schools in the state to meet or exceed their goals. For, that were set forth by the state, which is really a, an impressive, impressive thing. When you go on to the Desi website, you can actually click into each of the subgroups, um, at the, the different indicators that are. In, um, under each, each of those tabs. Great, your mouse is just where I wanted it, perfect. So if you go down a little bit more, you can see the formula that they come across with. What we had last year and what we, um, have this year for accountability. And it looks scary because it looks like we went down, but I, um, spent a lot of time with the accountability people at MCAS and. What happened was we had, um, when you have such a high amount of growth and you're at such a high point, it's really difficult to keep getting higher. So for example, our, um, our work that we did, we did a lot of work to help with our chronic absenteeism percentage. And so the state, other places in the state might have a, a thirty percent, a rate of attendance that. That they consider like the danger zone. Ours is so low that it's really difficult to, um, to get that. Get the full amount of points every year for that. Um, do people have a general idea of what I'm talking about? If you want to stop me or have me go deeper into anything, go right ahead. The achievement part, you'll see, it, it, we almost earned all of the points that we possibly could for ELA and for math. So, um, science doesn't have a growth rate because they only start taking the science when they're in fifth grade. But you'll see that we have, um, met and exceeded the scores right for the, for the achievement. It's pretty exciting to also note that over the MCAS, all of the subtests, so each grade level. We almost beat the state in every single category except for one, for every single grade level for math, ELA and for science. I don't know, it was pretty exciting to me. So, um, the growth scores, you'll see that we are, our math and our ELA, we have a two. That's based again on what the state thought we would be able to do for growth. We got two of those points out of four and then in math, we got three. Um, the staff and I have been drilling down more and more into this and taking a deeper look at what our current practices are and where we are. We're building our school improvement plan off of what we're learning about from the, from the MCAS. Um, again, high school completion, the next category does not affect us, um, because we are. An elementary school and the English proficiency, you need to have a certain amount of students in each category in order for it to count as a category. We don't have as, we don't have that many students to count. Okay, so see at the chronic absenteeism, we, we did have a one out of four and so, um, the state thinks that we should be at an. Eight percent or lower for the, um, for the percentage of, of attendance. And I have to say, I know that we've gotten some feedback that people are really concerned about how the, um. All of the food now is eat in the, either in the cafeteria or in a couple of designated places for staff. And, um, we've really encouraged the, uh, students to do a lot more hand washing. And I was touching base with my nurse earlier and I said, I really feel like our kids are less sick this year than they were last year. And we actually have fifty percent less absenteeism for colds than we did at this point last year. So the practices that we put in place have that, um, have that benefit, that side effect of, of having more students in school. So we're excited about that. Um, as part of the absenteeism, we also have a committee that looks at, at absences every single month. And we, um, notified families and about the importance of coming to school. And, um, really encourage our students to come when they're not, when they're not sick, of course. Okay, so we can head on over to, is there any other, any questions about that slide in particular about our accountability? Okay, all right, so if we head over to number, um, slide number four.
About this one?
Yes, this is just a quick snapshot of our, how our students performed. So in our, across all of our grades that took the MCAS, we don't have grade seven and eight, so we, uh, this will go up to grade six. So you'll see the percentage of exceeding, meeting, partially meeting and not meeting students. Um, that in each of the categories. So English language arts is on the top, followed by math and then, um, science and technology at the bottom. So, um, further, when I went over this with staff, we did go into each grade level and broke out exactly, um, what the percentages were and then. Will further continue to compare the same group of students to each other, so we get a more clear picture of what, what the needs are for the students. So that's a taking a picture at all students. Um, our next slide, Amy, did you wanna speak to this? The, for the, um, special needs or did you?
Um, I'll probably end up sharing about the same information. This does all high needs together and mine is separated into, um. I'm just focusing on the students with special needs and students with IEPs, so go ahead and, and do this and. It may be a little bit of a repeat, but I've got a little bit of a different lens, so it should be fine.
Absolutely, and like Amy just said, high needs is a different subcategory than, um, students that are on an IEP. It's also including any students that, um, it's a, have a low income and there's a, it's a bigger subgroup. So when we're looking specifically at our high need students, this is important to know because we wanna look at, um, how our interventions are working and our. If our programs are meeting the needs of our students. So we are thrilled to report that we have, um, students in high needs groups that are getting exceeding expectations. That's the, the top amount that you can get. And then if you look with our ELA, we didn't have any students that didn't meet expectations, which is, which is incredible. So a lot of students, um, all of our students to, took the regular MCAS with, some with accommodations, but nobody took the alternative. M- MCAS, so this is all of our students represented. In mathematics, again, we didn't have anybody that didn't meet the expectations, which is really thrilling to see. And, um, we're gonna be continuous, continuing to drill into, you know, what our students need. Um, and scientific technology, we didn't have anybody not meeting, but we didn't have anybody exceeding. So we're gonna take a closer look at that to see how we can better support students in answering those high level science questions. Okay, great, our next steps, we are going to continue to do the data dive and really look at, um, the. Have teachers look at not just the individual scores, but also any trends that we noticed over the years. And we have also did, um, a bit of a deep dive into the writing. We're able to access what the students actually wrote for their writing. And that's been really helpful in helping us to see how students are answering questions. Um, a lot of times, it's. It's not, they're not quite answering the question that's being asked, so we will, um, continue to support students with developing those skills. We'll also, in addition to that, be looking at our goal setting. What do we need to do as a, as a district, as a, a, a collective group of educators? How are we gonna continue to improve the trajectory for our students? Um, in addition to that, the, every, um, every student is, is being taught the state standards for Massachusetts. So we're gonna continue to look at that and look at our curriculum decisions and our intervention and really dive into. What, what are the critical areas that students are struggling with and where are celebrations where students are, are high achieving? All right, does anybody have any questions or comments? I know that was a lot. And I'm also happy if you wanna meet. At another time to go over anything more specifically.
Anna has her hand up.
Great.
Yeah, I just have a question about the science data.
True.
So it seems like a lot of students. And if those are counts.
Those are, are percentages.
But then they don't add up to a hundred.
Uh, there, there might have been somebody absent that day.
No, but like six.
Wait, which side are you on?
They, oh no, they do add, that, that does add up to a hundred. Okay, so these are percentages of kids that fall into each category.
Exactly.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, to get kids in the exceeding, it's, it, I think that's a real, um, a real testament to what's being taught because it's. Very difficult to do. We don't always know where the state is gonna, they could be asking questions that were in third grade standards. We don't know. What they're going to ask because this is the first real assessment that they've had of science that is, is, um, statewide. It's not the first real assessment, but you know what I mean? It's the first assessment that is normed against the rest of the students of the state.
Uh, Leah has a question.
Great. Um, so, uh, it is really great news to see the performance. Um, I was wondering how the figures compared to last year. Um, I know it's like a totally different set of students, um, but in comparison to last year, did we have like more students? In the, like, mid-meets versus, like. How are we, how are we shaking out compared to last year's performance?
That is a great question. I mean, we, I didn't do as, um, much of the comparison yet because we're really focusing on sort of. Where the currents, the current level of the students are. Sometimes I affectionately refer to the MCAS as an autopsy because by the time we get the data, the kids have either moved on or they're totally different readers and writers and mathematicians. And, and scientists from where they were assessed year, even a year before, even six months before. So we really focused on the live data, not the more live data of the writing and looking at it, um, with that lens. But next month, we'll be looking more at, more deeply at comparing the students to each other. That's the, that's where I think is. You get the most bang for your buck because you make sure that those students are still growing, but globally. I mean, outperforming the state in all, all the subcategories except for one is pretty impressive, like they are, um. They're, they're definitely hit, a lot of students hit their personal growth and, um, we're really successful in this. For this assessment this year. So I can give you, um, more, I can give you an update too, after we look more closely at that.
Um, so let's see, if, Amy, I'm gonna just check my share settings here again, cause I don't understand what's going on here.
I think, I mean, let me, I'll, I'll click on it. I think I can share mine. Yup, you see that?
Yup.
Perfect. All right, so, um, the, what Anne was focused on is the principal is, is all of the students. And my role as the Director of Student Support Services was really to focus on, um, students who have IEPs. Um, and I wanna look at, we wanna look at both their overall achievement as well as the gap between students who have IEPs and students who do not have. IEPs. Um, and just as a, you know, sort of overall reminder, the purpose of special education is to provide students with disabilities. With the accommodations and modifications to be able to access the general education setting. And in terms of a statewide assessment, the MCAS is that general education setting. So, um, you know, the students that take the MCAS alt, that's sort of like their separate setting. Um, the, the general regular MCAS is our, our general education setting. And so, you know, as Anne, um, referred to, we wanna compare our students, um, with the rest of the state as well as our students to each other. Um, and, um, you know, we have very small, um, populations of students and in order to protect those populations. Um, you know, there's only a handful of students with IEPs in each grade level, so we're looking at the grade band of, uh, grades three through six. Um, you know, I, we have drilled down, um, into the specific, specific grade levels. Um, but, um, you know, in a public meeting, um, that might be too identifiable for students and, and we wanna protect their, um. Their identi- their identities. Um, so as you can see, um, for the color coding, they, uh, light blue is students with IEPs at, um. At, uh, Chutesbury, um, we, the students without IEPs at Chutesbury is the light purple. Um, students with an IEP at the state is that darker blue and students without IEPs at the state level is the dark purple. So you can sort of see that's where we're looking at, um, comparisons. Um, so we're looking first at achievement, um, which is how well a student performed overall in the test. So did they sort of meet the benchmark? Um, and in ELA, um, twenty percent of our students with an IEP are meeting the benchmark or above. Um, and there are no students with IEPs, um, that are in the not meeting category. So we have students in the meeting or above and students in the partially meeting, but we don't have any students on IEPs in the not meeting category. Um, we have, um, uh, Chutesbury has more students in the meeting category and fewer students. In the not meeting category than students with IEPs across the state. So we have, um, twenty percent of our students are meeting or above and only twelve percent of the state. Um, students with IEPs are meeting or above. And then if you go over to the not meeting category. Forty-six percent of students who have IEPs, um, in the state are not me, in the not meeting category. And, um, Chutesbury has zero percent. So, um, you know, we, we, um, perform very well, um, compared to. Um, students with IEPs across the state. Um, the, the thing that we're going to, um, really focus on is that gap between students with IEPs and the students without IEPs. Um, right now, we have, um, you know, there's fifty, uh, fifty percent, fifty percentage points difference. Between students who have IEPs meeting and students who don't have IEPs meeting. Um, so that's one of the things that we'll be looking forward to, um, looking, looking to close the gap as we move forward. But now I can't click. There we go, okay. Um, so, uh, this is again, um, the achievement, um, but this is for math. And grades three through six, um, the same, um, you know, color coding throughout. Um, as you can see, um, students, uh, sixty percent of, uh, Chutesbury students on IEPs are meeting or above meeting. Um, and again, we have none that are not meeting, um, the benchmark. Um, students, um, at, uh, Chutesbury who have an IEP were in the meeting plus category at a much higher percentage. Than students with IEPs across the state, um, and we even, um, students without students. With IEPs also outperformed the students in math, um, who do not have IEPs. In, in both Chutesbury and across the state. So, um, that's a very big, um, celebration point. Um, you know, and, you know, I think especially, uh, not only compared to their, uh, general education, um, peers. But specifically that, that gap between, um, how the, their peers across the state are performing. Um, that was, that's a really big, uh, celebration. Um, our next steps in this category are really to look at those students who are in that partially meeting category. Um, and really try to figure out, um, you know, how, how close are those students to being able, to being at the meeting category? Um, are there specific, specific standards or strands that, um, you know, a, a chunk of students are really, um, you know, not. Working, um, not meeting the standard for, um, and, uh, if that's the case, then we know sort of a direction to go in. Um, so that's the category that we'll be taking a closer look at, um, in math. And then, uh, we get to the growth categories and, uh, growth measures the progress toward proficiency over time. So even students who are low performing can have a high growth. Um, which means that, um, even those students who are not yet at the benchmark are still making meaningful progress. Um, so our, this measures grades four through six because grade three, it's the first year that they've taken the MCAS and so we don't have growth measures for them. Um, the categories, um, are, uh, very low growth to very high growth. And that corresponds with, um, the number bands that you see over here on the, uh, right hand side. So if they get one to twenty, um, points, then it's very low, twenty-one to forty, forty is low and you can see the rest. Um, so in ELA, the students with IEPs overall had high growth. Um, the students with IEPs from SES had a higher growth percentage than students with IEPs. Across the state, students without IEPs at SES and students without IEPs across the state. So even though in, you know, previous slides, we saw that their, um, achievement wasn't quite as high, um, the, their growth. Um, is, is high and so that, um, is again, um, really great to see. Um, you can take a, a look over there. We also didn't have anybody in the very low category of growth. Um, and so we'll be looking at, um, you know, the, the low and moderate categories. Um, of, and see what the students there, how we can help those students grow, um, even, even more. And so that's one of the things we'll be looking at at growth with ELA. Um, and then in math, um, students, um, at SES with IEPs demonstrated growth in the high, um, category. And, um. If you can look over, um, at the right hand, the very far right, um, we had forty-five percent of our students in the very high category of growth. Um, students, for students with IEPs, um, we look at growth oftentimes more even than we do achievement. Because we want to make sure that they are, um, moving forward and closing the gaps, um, and that's what growth shows. And so, um, you know, that's a very good sign for, for that, those students as well. And again, um, you know, our students, um, with IEPs in math also. Um, had, uh, a higher growth percentage than all of the other categories of students. Uh, so our next steps, um, you know, we've got a lot of great things to celebrate here. Um, we still have work to do. Um, and some of our, our next steps are that we're going to. And some of our, our next steps are that we're going to, um, analyze the specific student growth and achievement data. We want to make sure that the students on IEPs, um, you know, we want to see which students on IEPs are growing at a high rate, but not achieving benchmark, which means that we're sort of on the right track. We just haven't closed the gap yet. Um, and so some, and then we want to take a look at the students who are demonstrating low growth and low achievement. Because then we really need to change something, um, in the way that we're delivering instruction, um, to those students. We want, also want to work towards a higher level, level of integration, um, in the general education setting, particularly in ELA where there's that big gap between, um, the performance of students, um, with IEPs and without IEPs. Because, you know, if the students are presented with the grade level instruction as well as their specific instruction, we know that those students, um, uh, perform better overall. And so that's where we want to really take a look, especially like I said, in that ELA. Um, and then we want to take a look at the math too and see, you know, what's going well for the students with IEPs. How can we continue that? And is there anything that we can bring back to the general, um, the general education setting? So I, um, I'm going to stop sharing my screen unless people have, and if you have specific questions, I can, um, give them, I can pull it back up. But are there any, um, questions?
Hold on. I'm sorry. My screen is acting up. I don't see any now that I can see all of you again.
Great. Um, and again, you know, if something comes up that you, you know, think about and, and want to, and answer to, um, you know, feel free to email me. Or, you know, email Anne, um, and we can, um, you know, get you some answers to that. But, um, overall it's, it's really, uh, quite promising. So that's really great news.
All right. Well, we have raised our hand.
Yeah, sorry. Last minute. Is it audible? I don't know. Thank you, Amy, for sharing, um, that information. Um, it was really helpful to see, um, SES in comparison to the state. And, um, I also really appreciated hearing like some of what you're, you're thinking in terms of, your, your focus as you're digging into the data and thinking about how to help the students. I, before I forget, I'm actually wondering if, if Anne, if like part of what you're thinking, like I know you had shared how we stack up against others in the state. But it'd be helpful to kind of see that in like a chart or something. If, I mean, I'm not trying to give you more work or anything, but if it is something that you're, you're looking at.
I think I already did the work. Jeremy, if I shared the faculty slides to you, do you want to share? I can tell you, I think it's like slide 62. It is slide 48. And that shows the, um, that shows us against, uh, not against the state, but standby. Let me get Jeremy this, so.
Chair it by email. Is that how we're getting it?
Yes. I just hit share. It'll come up.
Meeting either, but if you want to like, if you, is that already in the agenda? Sorry if I missed it.
It's actually slide 48. It's, um, I can, if it makes more sense for me to put it in the Canva. I mean.
No, I can, I can take it as it is. Is it in the agenda? Did I just miss it?
No, this is what I was gonna, I was, no, I just made a note to, um, to present this next week if people wanted to know, if people wanted to see it. But if you want to go to slide 48, that could, that shows us, um, by, it starts the, grade by grade level comparing us to the state. And then, um, if you notice on the slide, all, all the way to the right, it'll tell you the actual, um, it'll tell you the percentage. So for example, on slide 48, ELA, grade three, 55, 53% of the students were meeting and exceeding or exceeding. And the state had 43%. And then for math, we had 77% meeting and exceeding and the state had 44%. So if, um, if it makes it easier, I can just share those, add those slides to the Canva link and then you have that link in the agenda tonight.
Yeah, that's great.
That, if that helps. Yeah, no problem. Are you kidding? I love this stuff. It's so exciting. The kids did so well. We're so proud of them. For sure. Hard workers.
Cool.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll add that in there now. Jeremy, enjoy looking at the faculty slides and be glad that you don't have to look at 63 sides of me yapping, so.
No, I have my own, we have our own versions of that at my place. It's a me ask here, so I've been seeing lots of slides. So, okay. I gotta get back to our agenda now. I hate this computer that I am using tonight. I am so over this thing. It's just that switching between different, different computers, the Apple to Windows to Chromebook. Everything has to function differently. All right. So, uh, that is the end of our MCAS data. We have a handbook review and vote today too. So, um, I don't know. Anne, do you want to talk about this a little bit at all or?
Sure. I'd love to. It's, um, the link is in there and all of the components that are in the family handbook are right in, uh, or, or in a live Google site where you can, um, you can access it. Does every, is everybody able to look at the link?
Yep.
Okay. So that was shared earlier for your perusal, but you can go through, there's the routines and procedures, the communications, contact, way to get involved, school, school groups and resources, policies and procedures, and then the, um, school policy manual. It's in there. So if anybody has any suggestions or ideas, I would love to hear it.
Suzie.
As a grandparent, I've been having trouble finding information about the preschoolers. Different little things and, um, and it's kind of an intro to, to the school. That's when it starts at preschool. So I don't know if anybody could look at, um, the town, the, uh, school website and the, the way information is categorized. So if you're a preschool grandma, you can find out what you need to find out, but it's not very obvious to me.
Okay.
Isn't there a, I was just on the site recently. Don't we have a separate pre-K handbook as well?
Oh, we do. And we have a kindergarten one too, because it's more specific. So, um, as I want to say the caregiver, the primary caregiver has access to that, but that can be on the website as well. We could do that. Sure. And, um, I, there's a really great website too for preschool that the teacher does and it's password protected. But I bet we could get you on the list to be able to take a peek at that. It's absolutely adorable.
It's kind of, it's kind of, uh, it happens spontaneously, like suddenly I need to know X. Oh, Jesus. So.
Under information, there's a link to the family home book, uh, handbook, and then there's a pre-K handbook under information, but I did, yeah, it's like.
I can make it more prominent, make it easier to find.
Yep.
I only know that because I was looking at it recently. All right. Um, so we need to, Nate, go ahead. Sorry.
I just wanted to know what kind of information Suzie was looking for so we can help get her the information she needs. Is it handbook related? Or is it like dates and times and?
It's, yeah, it's, I recently, it's like exactly what time is the pickup for preschool? Because suddenly I was doing that and it was just not easy to find. So I ended up calling Laura and she told me. But actually she told me nine of whatever, 45. Now I can't even remember what it is. But, um, all the kids were gone except for Mina when I got there. So it's, there could be what the time is and then there's what really happens. And, you know, she was fine, but I would, I tried to figure it out and it's, it's actually always on the fly when suddenly you got to get in the car and go. So.
Yeah. And you're not the only parent that has that complaint about the preschool pickup.
Yeah.
Drop off. It's at a very, you know, it's sporadic and they're, they said, Nicole said she was trying to figure out their timing and, and no one wants to leave their kid alone at pickup times. So. Yeah, we're all have the similar experience, Suzie.
Shannon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Suzie that looking at the websites across the union schools, so not unique to Chutesberry, there's a lot of work to be done along there. And I'm sure it's one of those things because we don't have a full-time tech director across the union that manages that sort of things, that it's just continually been pushed back. I'll be honest, it wasn't on my radar the first year I was here either. But that is something that Robin, myself and Lindsay Rodriguez, who is our curriculum director, have been meeting with and trying to go, we're starting with the Union 28 pages first, but making our way through about making them a little bit more user friendly and checking if we have the right information. So you are not alone in sharing that concern. It's not unique just to Chutesberry and it is something on our radar that we need to improve upon.
And please let me know if there's anything else that pops up, like don't hesitate to reach out because, um, it's, we, like, I think it's pretty user friendly, the, um, the handbook that's currently there, but I'm happy to, to help workshop that out for sure. It's really good to know. Thank you.
I don't know what it is about school websites, but they do go stale pretty quickly. They tend to look dated relatively quickly. All right. So we need to vote on this, I guess, as well. So, uh, somebody want to move?
I moved to approve the handbook.
All right. Anna moves.
Second that.
Eight seconds. All right. All in favor? First off, is there any more discussion to have, be had with it? Okay. All in favor? My, you, I?
Got a lot of I.
Heard I. I can't even say my name.
Longco by.
All right. I think that was unanimous. Okay. Great. Thank you guys. Uh, superintendent's report.
All right. Um, so a few of the things that Anne had alluded to, some, um, SES updates. Anne and I, uh, recently were invited to a recognition ceremony sponsored by DESI, in which Chutesberry was, um, recognized for being one of the districts that has met their accountability settings for performance and have reached their pre-pandemic performance rates. The distinction, I want to point this out. Um, and there's, there's work to do as you dive into that MCAS work, there's always work to do. If we're not at 100% of our students meeting and exceeding, then there's work to do. But I think this distinction, um, is really a, it's a big kudos to, um, the staff, the leadership, and the families that, you know, do their part to partner with us to help, um, get student performance back where it was. In public education, the pandemic is not, the impact of that is, is still, um, being felt. Chutesberry is one of 63 districts that have reached those pre-pandemic levels out of 318 in the Commonwealth. So there is a lot of work to still be done across the Commonwealth and Chutesberry is, you know, well on their way. So that was great. Um, and we're very proud of them. I've been able to spend some time at, um, Chutesberry lately. I was able to go to the open house. It was incredibly well attended. It was nice to walk around and see students, um, so genuinely excited to share what's going on in their classrooms. I know I saw some of you there, um, and, um, that was, you know, we have a real focus this year on building, um, family engagement, um, opportunities across all of the schools within the union. And it was just such a great night to see the, the ease and pride in which students were, uh, you know, showing back up at school and, and showing what they're doing. Um, so I was very excited. I was also able to take part in data meetings at SES. Data meetings are a newly refined process across the district and brings together staff to look at student performance measures through a variety of data points in an effort to gauge impact on instruction and practices and meet the needs of individual students. The process of looking at data is not new, but the process in which we're looking at it across grade levels and everybody coming together and looking at the school-wide data and talking about, you know, what do they notice? What do they wonder? And diving into that, um, is new and it was really, um, the SES staff, and I happen to be able to go to their data meetings. They happen at every school across the union at the same time. So I'll be rotating, but the SES staff was very reflective. They were very engaged. They were looking at, um, even noticing trends like, wow, they were really performing high at this grade level and took a little dip here, like what changed? Was it, you know, what are we using for curriculum? They were really engaged in, in that process. So, so kudos to them and they've set a hard, a high bar for when I go to the next data meeting, uh, at other schools. Some Union 28 wide updates. Uh, we are beginning the budget process across the union schools. And the first step in that process is to work on the Union 28 budget. We have our second JSC budget and personnel committee, committee meeting scheduled for October 20th. Among the issues we are grappling with, um, our budgeting for technology needs and aligning our central office staff salaries with other Franklin County, um, schools. We anticipate that this upcoming budget season is going to be especially challenging at both the municipal and state levels as we try to navigate educational funding, volatile, volatility, municipal challenges that are incurring, especially in the areas of insurance and, um, funding. So we're going to be very proactive and try to be at those, you know, reaching out to our partners. I know we are going to be attending, um, the meeting that Suzie spoke about to, to really be a partner at that table. And so we appreciate the invitation and, and getting us to the seat early. So thank you very much. Union 28 schools will all take part in a shared professional development day tomorrow, known as Curriculum Day and SES is the host school tomorrow. So a huge, uh, thank you to Anne and her team for hosting. Um, and a special shout out to Katrina who is providing the morning, morning treats and breakfast. And that's, you know, not, not easy for a big group. And we've already told them, we're not really sure how warm it's could be. So bring an extra sweater because we can't, we can't move the, the, uh, activities at this point. So, um, but we are optimistic. It's going to go just wonderfully. Some legislative updates, the Healy Driscoll administration has announced some listening sessions to solicit feedback on the school funding formula, which is known as chapter 70. And, uh, I have included in the report, um, there are, there's a virtual, um, meeting, but there is an in-person meeting on November 6th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at Greenfield High School. So I would encourage you to, um, attend, share that with your municipal partners. I think that there's long been talk about the chapter 70 formula needs to be rewritten. And, um, it just, it is very, um, disproportionate in its impact to small rural communities. And I think it's very important that we exercise our, um, our presence at those type of meetings. So there is a virtual one that I have linked and then there is the, um, Western Mass area one. And I will be attending the in-person in Greenfield. And I provided some links about, um, the, um, contribution rate and all that within my report. So if you want to look at how that works, um, you will have that readily available. And I'm happy for any questions if you have them. And if not, I'll mute.
Katrina has.
Yeah, I just had a question for, and you sort of answered it already, but, um, I had a question more for the broader group because that was, that, um, hearing or not hearing, but like public comment session was on my radar too. I wasn't sure. Do we have a plan for like a presence or a submitted comment for that? I mean, I'm happy to go as well, but I just figured it might be good to align as a group.
Yeah, we don't have one, but, um, we could. We need more funding.
Yeah. I mean, I think we all agree. We need more money. Yeah, I wasn't sure if maybe it made sense to submit like a, because it seems like there's an option to submit a written comment and then there's also the option to like go in person. So I wasn't sure if we kind of wanted to, and I'm happy to like lead a, a draft on Google or something like that for what our comment might be, but, um, yeah, I guess for something like that, obviously we just need to, I would just need to make sure I had good numbers for like compelling comments about why we need more money or something like that, but.
I would wonder, Katrina, if MASC has sort of a template letter they may have for people who are getting, I don't know if that's the case, but I know that the Mass Association of School Superintendents will often send, they send out like, here's sort of a form letter, plug in your numbers type of thing. So I'm wondering, and I don't know the answer, but you might want to look at MASC's website and see if they have any form letters so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But I mean, I'm sure that this group could come up, um, and, and especially with partnering with your, you know, municipal partners. I'm sure that you could come up with a, a, a great letter to submit. Or, or sign up to, you know, read the letter if you want, but, um, you might want to check out MASC. I don't know the answer, but it might be there.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. I, I think that they tend to have a lot of, you know, resources for things like this. So that's definitely. Yeah, I was thinking that too. I, I think that they tend to have a lot of, you know, resources for things like this, so that's definitely a good idea.
I also might say um, that email that I sent out to all of us, it was the MTA email. That we all signed on to about the funding. There was some, I think there was some information. Um, that as well that might also be helpful in that way.
Okay, alright, well, I'll send, uh, we can like continue this conversation offline via email, but I'll just like let you guys know what I find and. I'll reach out to them or look through the FAQs at least first and then see what they have and what we might want to submit otherwise.
Okay.
I don't want to miss the opportunity to say yes, please.
Thank you, Katrina. And what were you gonna?
Um, I don't know if you can see it, but I think I just figured I had to share a note to you. Alright, do I, so that's the link that's updated with the slides. Now in Canva at the end of it, so. I can stop, I can close it if you want, or, I don't know. Does it look like?
Can you put it, do we have a comment thing you?
Ah, that's what I was looking for, but then I just saw the AI thing and then I saw the docs and the notes and I wasn't sure how to.
It's gotten way more confusing in this place.
Remember when it had a chat and it was so easy, you just opened it? Yeah, now there's white, which is fancy, but.
Oh, is that what whiteboards is all about?
I don't know. Well, does anybody know a better way for me to share it besides a blaring document?
Because we can't copy and paste it from this.
Anne, if you can just, you could maybe just relink it in the agenda.
I would love to. I think the other link works and updates, but just to be safe, I'll do that.
Okay.
When I click on it, I can get to what you're sharing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
When you click on the, on the shared screen?
Yeah, put your cursor over it.
I, I have, I know, I can't do this one. Sorry.
Isn't it wild?
Oh, I can. I can follow the link.
I can, I can do it too, not to brag.
I loved it. Thank you so much. I was pretty excited that I found it, but then I realized everybody could see it like blaring in their face, so.
Well, I guess everyone else can click on it too, but I can't, I can just look at it.
Everyone, please enjoy my meeting notes. I'm going to email it to everybody. I'll keep, I'll make it really simple.
Thank you.
Sure thing, I'll stop. Okay.
Um. Have I mentioned how much I hate this computer? Uh, alright, so that's. Wait, hold on a second. So we just did the superintendent's report, Director of Finance and Operations, um, with the year end report, I believe, and we also. Uh, need to vote on me being able to sign um, the end of year. Report, okay, uh, go ahead, Caitlin, thank you.
Sure, so the end of year port is uh, it's pretty massive. Um, there's uh, the. It is the, all of the information I have from the school, the information I've retrieved from the town. Um, I can go through it. You can look at it if you want to in your own time. Um. I can give you the synopsis, whatever this committee feels like is the best use of the time.
I would be fine with an overview, like what you think is important for us to know out of it and we can look at it, you know. In our own moments if we have further questions, um, but I.
Sure. And uh, we can always make, um, if there are questions about it, I can always make adjustments to it. After through Desi, make amendments to the, to the report. But what the, the important things that I always kind of like finishing out when I do the report, because it takes about a. Day and a half first per district is the title one maintenance of effort and IDEA man- maintenance of effort. So those two things are the, and I'll share. I can. Um.
There it is.
Do you see it?
Nope.
Okay, I see something else on my screen, which is weird, but let me close out that. I've got a lot of stuff open. And sorry if it looks like I'm always looking to left, that's because the, the meetings on the left and the other stuff's on the right. Um, so. These two things, title one, maintenance of effort, IDEA, maintenance of effort. For uh, title one, we have to spend over ninety percent of what we spent last year. And we've hit that and, and managed more. Um, IDEA, you have to spend over a hundred percent of what was spent last year. And we've also hit that, um, we did have some special education expenses that. Um, really kind of brought us well and beyond what we had for the, the previous year. So if we did not meet maintenance of effort, then we would have to give um, exemptions. We'd have to say, well, this is why we didn't and there's only certain things qualify for exemptions. But both of those were not a problem this year because we have hit both of them. And if you want to look through, I'm going to give you a very quick and maybe dizzying. Kind of synopsis of what this report is. The first one is schedule one, revenue and expenditure summary revenues. Uh, these are all the revenues that we receive from tuition from individuals. That would be our preschool. Tuition and then everything in blue is what the state already inputs. And then there's the expenditures by school committee. These are all the kind of categories. Of what we expend uh, from our operating budget. So just what the town allocates and we spend for our operating budget. And it is kind of, you'll see there's multiple columns somewhere for um, special education versus. There you go, regular day or undistributed, meaning a principal, you can't really. Suss apart her time of special education versus regular day, so they would just go in undistributed. And then. After all of those. Then we have all of the, you know, goes through the instructional lines, our plans and operations. And then uh, tuition to other schools. Expenditures by city or town. These are what actually comes from the town of Chutesbury. So people transportation, the town pays for the transportation, so it is recorded in. The city or town. Same thing for insurances, retirement. And then payments to other districts, school choice tuition, the town picks up the payments to. Other uh, schools that students may attend. Then. Uh, federal grants, state grants, special funds, that's on this next section. We are not a regional, so this one doesn't apply to us. And then it kind of goes just to instructional expenses and I don't put these numbers in there. It pulls it from a different tab that I put all the. Instructional expenses into. And then it looks at for instructional expenses paid for by grants and other funding sources. So this tab E O Y twenty five is a kind of cumulative tab of everything we've put into. And other tabs and a bunch you've put into, into that tab also. Special education expenditures by placement. So students that are three to five years old versus six to twenty one. Transportation, so here's all the expenditures for transportation and you'll see we have. Fifty eight students that are reimbursable, meaning they live uh, outside of a mile and a half. And twenty one that live within a mile and a half. Special education. Transportation expenses. Vocational doesn't apply to us, um. And then it goes into the budget for the following year. For this current year, they want to know. Everything that we've budgeted for this current year, for instruction, for transportation. For the school and then also by the city or town. Revenues that are anticipated, we budgeted thirty five thousand from preschool. Regional, so this doesn't apply to us. And then a summary. And that is that. Um, E O Y twenty five tab. So what we would like to do is have a. Vote to allow the chair to sign the end of year port that says that to the best of your knowledge, this is correct. And then I can have that and send it to the state. Um, I linked it in the Director of Finance report, um, I sent out. The other day, but or I, and I think it was in the agenda a week ago. If you need more time or if you have any additional questions, for some of it, if you have a, a question on a specific piece of it. It might take me a little time to kind of get back to you or might take me till tomorrow to, to look into a specific things. Uh, because it is pretty, pretty massive. But are, are there any questions about it right now?
No, I moved to allow the chair to sign the end of the year report.
Certification page.
Certification page.
I'd also like to have permission to doodle on it. Um, alright, so Anne, Anne moves. Nate seconds, all in favor, my UI.
Got a lot of I.
Heard I.
Jack guy.
Long co by.
Right on, motion.
Alright.
Approved.
Thank, thank you, and I'll probably send that to Jeremy over DocuSign.
Sounds great. Do you have to do something with the expense report as well, or is that?
That's in there. I can pull it up. Um, but if you've, or we can kind of move along and if you've got specific questions on it, I'll. Be happy to answer, but I'm just going to try to kind of link these pages so that you can see them and have some time to, to look at them.
I'm okay with that. Does anybody else have any concerns around that? Okay, so moving on, it would be the principals report. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Anne, do you have other things that you would like to add tonight?
Yes, um, it'll be incredibly brief because the majority of my principal report tonight was sharing the MCAS. Um, and then, and also the handbook, so I probably overtook my time. Um, just something. Me aside, it was just something, a little great thing to share. A lot of students and staff have been working to recognize each other and all of the wonderful behaviors that we see, so. I included a picture of Coco who um, has been catching people being good, so. Um, students are writing about things that they're noticing that other students are doing and it's really helping to increase their social awareness and. Recognizing people being awesome. We also um, had fourth grade had put a call out to people, to. People in the community to invite them to be um. Poets, like if they are poets, they didn't, they didn't spark, I don't think they sparked any brand new poets, but they did ask people who are. Are poets to come and share what they um, what, like about their craft and how they. And use emotions in their poetry and how they um, how they write. Um, so it was really, that was really a fascinating, a big win for us. So I just wanted to share that and. I will um, keep it brief because I've already talked a lot, so there you go.
Thank you uh, very much. Anne, um, alright, Anna.
Oh, so much fun. Um. So the track and field is still going strong. Um, did I talk about the PRS complaint last time?
Hmm, I don't remember, I don't remember.
So there was a complaint made, I think it was like last year that um, this, the district wasn't responding to bullying complaints. According to Massachusetts regulations and our own policies and procedures and um, so. The state looked at it and said, yes, you're right, you're not, they're not doing that. And so they've. Um. Required us to um, submit data showing and um. Uh, comply with certain timelines to get all of this stuff done. Um. So that's another really fun thing that the region's doing. I, I personally will say that. I've been really frustrated with the speed with which we, the region has been addressing these issues. Um, this is what blew up the region um. Before and then we had a, you know, an interim superintendent that made. Almost no progress on it and then we got a new superintendent who has made like this much progress on it. And so I would, you know, I'm hoping that with this extra motivation that we'll be able to see some actual. Substantial progress on this. I think there's been. So many things for the new superintendent to take care of, that it's not really her fault, it's just that. We, we need to do better and so um, hopefully that will happen. We also have. Let's see, what else is, I can't even, there's so many different things going on that um. We're starting to move on the budget process. Um, the Financial Sustainability Subcommittee, which I'm also on, um, is putting together a report for the Regional School Committee about. Um. The state of the finances and. Um, so it's trying to just sort of like point out where the problems are, what. Possible things the region can do to improve the situation, which is, there's just really not that many things to do. Um, a lot of it has to do with like pushing legislature to, you know. Go to this budget hearing or this uh, listening session to uh. Ask for more money, basically. We need new chapter seventy formula, we need new rural schools formula, we need new charter school formula. Um. But uh, yeah, that's not. Um, great. Uh, apparently, I don't know, I don't think Chutesbury residents are really causing this problem. But um. There's two things that are going on. One is people are apparently not respecting the do not enter signs around the construction zone. Of the athletic field, so if you know of anybody who decided it would be really fun to take a jog around the track while it's being. Created, tell them that that's extremely damaging and expensive and please don't do it. Um, as well as dangerous, so just stay out of the construction zone. Also, apparently there have been some. Students who have been attending athletic events and causing a ruckus and a commotion and um. Safety violations and so um, now parents are being required to attend with their children under, so grade eight and under. So please make sure your children are respectful if they decide to attend a middle school or high school athletic event.
Strange days. Is causing a ruckus? Never heard this.
Apparently so much of a ruckus that police had to be called.
Wow, I did see the picture of the footprints across the like.
Yeah, that, I mean, that is not cool.
No. Worked too hard for this. Alright, um, again, sorry. Uh, next up, we have the Joint Supervisory Committee Report. Um. No, we didn't have a meeting in between, so we have to wait for that one. Um, our next meeting date for the Joint Supervisor Committee is this coming Monday, I believe. Is that right? Okay.
Um, it's only the budget subcommittee.
Oh, it's only the budget subcommittee. We're next month for the um.
Yep, November seventh.
That's what it says it right there. Great. Uh, CES report?
So for um, the collaborative, we had a, um, we did the board reorganization, so. The um, chair and vice chair from last year are doing it again this year. Um, we spent a majority of the meeting, um, which was on September twenty fourth. Discussing the search firm and the terms of the agreement that we want um, with them. Um, it's going to be about twenty thousand for the contract. Um, and there are going to be some site visits um, later this month and into November. As part of the interviews uh, for candidates. Um, they are hoping to um, present a candidate, I think. Early January for vote by the board in late January. Um, so it's going to be um, an interesting next few months as they look for an executive director. Um, the only other thing to highlight, I think, well. apparently they met with the Commissioner of Desi who was out um this way October third. Um the only other thing to highlight is um that the budget um is currently looking good for this year, um whereas it's been a little um tight in the prior couple of years, so um so far so good with the CES budget.
Alright, great. Thank you, Leah. Alright, that moves us out of the report section of tonight and into our policy review section. Uh we've got a first read of KBA, GB, EBC, uh KI and IHAMR. Those are all here for first reads, they don't require any voting. Does anybody have anything that they would like to comment or mention on any of those? Alright, hearing none, uh we will move on to the second vote for deletion. Got policy Iham um one, which is this uh school committee notification of an access to sex education curriculum and the community involvement in decision. I'll just remind that we did have discussion over that uh last session, our last meeting. Um so if anyone has any comments, um please bring them forward, otherwise we need a movement and a vote on this.
I move to delete or remove retire um policy IHAM one and policy KCB.
Thank you. Uh all in favor, my UI.
Catalano eye.
Heard eye.
Jack guy.
Long cop eye.
Unanimous, thank you. Um and then we have a final vote on uh BA, BAA, BB, BBA, BBAA, BBBA, and BCA. Good luck, whoever wants to move on those.
I'll move, but I I had a question too, so could have some discussion.
Yeah, we'll do the discussion after the so move, Leah moves.
Yeah.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
Is that you, Anna? Thank you. Um alright, so discussion.
Um I had a question on BAA and like self eval and we may just wanna talk about, I don't know, I don't know, I never really heard of it. Clearly, I've this is my first time on a school committee. Um so it was just interesting that we have a self assessment um or like it's encouraged that we as a school committee have one. Um nothing really outside of us just like thinking about it as a committee, but for BB um they had recommended including information about just general things like the number of school committee members and the length of the term. And um we didn't have that in we didn't have that specified in here, so I wonder if maybe like this shouldn't go forward for approval until we add s- some of the recommendations that um MASC had. Sorry, I I missed this, I
Oh, it's alright.
Yes, um but yeah, I I would I would vote for us to like not move BD forward and then we just we update it with some of the general information about
Wait.
our makeup.
Which one?
Um BB, it's one to the third one.
School committee legal status?
Yeah. Yeah, it says details about like our composition. Um and provisions for election should be incorporated into this policy, I think, if I'm reading that correctly.
Where do you, where do you see that? I'm not seeing that.
Second, so under cross refs, the second like paragraph.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then it looks like Shannon has a has her hand up.
I was just gonna ask clarifying, are you is that you want the policy to have those additions just added and or do you want to send it back to the policy committee?
Oh, I was thinking that they could just be added. I um guiltily, I don't even know if that's the right word, but I don't actually know what those provisions are, like I I don't really know where to find them, but um I can look and add them.
So would those be added in as as separate cross references or would those be added in? I'm trying to, I'm trying to read that and understand what exactly it says. Such details should be incorporated into a statement in this category, references to the pertinent section of the charter or ordinances should be added to the legal references as it was done with the policy above. So we would add in what the term is and the number of um committee members and then add in, we would just add in our municipal our charter section or whatever that governs that, is that what we would do?
Yeah, it sounds like we can link to our charter, um but we we should add information about our composition and um our provisions for the election of committee members. But I'm, yeah, I would, yeah, I would say maybe like we just move that to final for next meeting once those changes have been made. Um and I can, I can take on figuring out where the I mean, it should be easy, right? Like it's on the website somewhere, so I'll, I can um make those.
It should be easy, but we'll see if it is, waiting for a report if it is.
So can we leave, can we leave this for vote for next? Next time, can we just leave it in this sort of second vote category? And let Leah make the adjustments to it and then do third vote next time with the.
We can do that, so you'll need to, there's a motion on the floor, so you'll need to vote, or maybe someone can do a friendly amendment just to exclude this one and keep that on there.
Okay.
Um I um will amend the motion on the floor to um have a final vote for uh BA, BAA, BBA, BBA, BBBA, BBBB and BCA.
I think you did it better. Alright, um so that was, that was the move.
Second that.
Second, thank you, Nate. Um and all we need is a majority for that, so uh all in favor of passing those laws, uh passing those passing those laws, passing those uh those policies uh on with uh excluding the BB, which we are gonna come back to. Um my UI.
Catalano eye.
Heard eye.
Jack guy.
Long cop eye.
I don't think we should do any more ones where they're all the same like that, BA, BBB. Alright, uh so our future business, uh we got the policy committee next uh month, November thirteenth at six thirty. School committee, November thirteenth at seven o'clock. Uh budget and personnel is meeting next Monday, if you're on that committee of the Joint Supervisory Committee. Right, is that or is that ours? That's no, it's budget and personnel. Um and then Union Twenty Eight uh is next November, uh next month, November seventeenth. I can't talk either now. Um are there any future agenda items that we want to add in for the next meeting besides inviting? And I'll take care of that, inviting the um building committee. Seeing, oh yeah, Nate, what were you gonna say?
Well, you know, there there are just a couple of grumblings that I heard in talking to people in the community. One, um I wanted to talk about uh the HR uh situation that's going on. I heard some grumblings um that I heard a a teacher was shorted uh two hundred something dollars, almost three hundred dollars from their check and needed to get, you know, it was gonna get into the next check, but there was concern why that happened. Um there's also concern of whether teachers were taking on accounting roles um and whether the HR was doing their part. And I just wanna make sure that we're paying HR to do their job and we're paying our teachers to do their job and the teachers aren't doing more accounting that they need to do.
I'm gonna chime in, I wanna be careful that we don't end up, cause we are such a small central office, I don't wanna end up talking about performance in an open meeting. Um but what I will tell you is that when those grumblings are happening, you should be directing them to Anne and myself.
Okay.
Nothing about that has come to my plate.
Okay.
And I'm really in a better position and I'm I'm not trying to take any authority away certainly from this committee, but I'm in a better position to address that than the committee is.
Okay.
So that's where you should be sending them.
And then I think if it feels like those are not addressed, then we could do um.
Then we could do an.
Session, we can do whatever we need to do here to.
Just that point, I um I was a stand-in at the negotiating committee last year to um whenever the last APEA negotiations were. And that was something that they had brought up in the committee meeting or in the discussions of not so uncommon mistakes in payroll and.
So again, we should be having this conversation in executive session if it's gonna go further.
So.
Okay.
And I'm only saying that to protect ourselves.
I'm just reporting what was said.
No, 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 I had, I do understand that, but we have a very small payroll office, so it's very easy to identify who we're speaking of and that's not fair.
Well, yeah, I mean, this was a while ago, so I don't know if it's still an issue, but yeah.
Yeah.
I think what like what I'm hearing um Shannon saying, I think that this makes sense to me is um that we should be directing those sort of grumblings to her or Anne. And then I, you know, if if people do not feel like they've gotten their redress, then we should schedule an executive session to talk about personnel and performance, because that's not something that we can do in open meeting.
And I really am happy to address it and I try to make myself available to staff, so and I know sometimes, right, they see you much more often, so just encourage them and then they should certainly go to you because you evaluate me. And so if they feel like listen, I'm talking to her and I'm not getting anywhere, then that's something through your purview that you that I'm not handling it well, if that makes sense, but it has to go through that process for for me to have an opportunity to address their concerns.
Thank you. Thank you.
Was there another one as well, Nate, that you wanted to bring up possibly?
Well, I mean, I think I brought it up earlier, but I also heard grumblings about this lunch um news lunch situation and um yeah, I just um it was uh hard to hear uh people in the community complain about um what's going on. Uh it was hard for me to hear that and um yeah, I just really, I wanna say that I support the Anne, that uh what you're doing and what is happening at the school right now. Um and I want to try to encourage all of us to, maybe if we hear that kind of grumbling to kind of push back. Um you know, Anne mentioned earlier, like for the five years that I've had a kid in school, this is the first year that they haven't come home within it's homesick within the first month. And I think that has a lot to do with the new practices, not eating in the hallway, not eating in classrooms. Um keeping food contained, hand washing. Um you know, it may be uh difficult to do. When I was a child, there was a similar uh student that had a similar allergy, we accommodated. Um the school accommodated and I think we can do the same. I was very um it was very hard to hear this person's perspective and um I don't know if anybody else has heard any grumblings about it, but yeah, if it was their kid, I, you know, I I can't imagine, you know.
My kid was grumbling the first couple of days, but we kind of set him straight on that. Um but like, I think the idea that like, you know, yeah, I mean I think that there is in some corners, there's this idea that these sort of things are made up, you know, but like I had a kid one time where like I had a like even though we, I don't allow eating in my classroom, every time before he came in, I had to sanitize his desk. Because he was so allergic that any like trace amount could set him into anaphylaxis. And the idea that like we're, I mean, there are all these other ways that we accommodate students in our schools, right? Like the fact that I I don't, I don't understand why we would grumble. And you know, I think the thing that I love that I have now that I didn't have before this meeting is I can say, yeah, and you know, the hand washing and this, like, they have reduced absences due to colds this year by fifty percent. I think that's a, that's a huge, you know, bonus for everybody.
Just to kind of bring people up to speed, we just, we have to um to be extremely cautious for um an allergy that's that is air, that could be in the air, it could be um transmitted very easily and make a student incredibly incredibly sick. So as an abundance of caution, we are only eating in designated areas. And honestly, the amount of food trash and worries about critters getting in and that sort of thing has really reduced too. So the school still looks like this first week of school, this it looks incredible because we're not having kids walking with a bag of Takis down the hall dragging their hand on the on the wall. I mean, it just, it's, it's really been um practices that we put in place for the better. I think the difficult part has been when you're allowed to just eat all the time dirt throughout the day to get that reduced to only a certain amount of places. And then people have had a felt like they lost a lot of their autonomy about where they could eat and that sort of thing. And um just in an abundance of caution, we've really um need to be able to provide an education for all of our students. And by providing designated eating spots that are sanitized and with kids really washing their hands, we're providing an education for students that may not or otherwise be able to participate. And um so that is disheartening that people are complaining about it because as a mom who has a child with an allergy, who had to be EpiPend at school when she was in fourth grade because of a spelling bee and they were eating at their desks and there was a trace of something on there, I gotta say I'm sorry if you're a little upset, but anaphylaxis is awful and um kids that have these life-threatening allergies is just very difficult. And we're just gotta really work together as a community because nobody is as worried as the parents of the child that has such a severe allergy.
Difficult, change is difficult, change in practice, right? But I mean, even tomorrow, we're going there and there are no students and we have sent out an abundance of reminders to folks, reminding them you're grownups in this building, but you may only eat outside and or in the caf. And only eating in the cafeteria and not eating in classrooms is not revolutionary, right? Like that's what a caf is designed for and so um
From a different viewpoint, like I, the idea, like the distractions of eating in class, like from a high school level, the distractions of eating in class, and granted I have ADHD, but like, you know, I can hear every chip crunch and every chip bag and like, it's just, it's it's not it, I get it, but like, my class isn't for grazing through, like, you know, like, you gotta, there's gotta be, I think, those those limitations. And again, the health aspect of that, that you have uncovered, I think is really great as well. The idea that people aren't constantly like putting their hands in their mouth and eating in places that are not, you know, designated for eating, um that just feels common sense, you know.
They're still eating a lot, don't worry, we have snack, having a full lunch in half an hour, they have multiple times that they're eating throughout the day and they can go outside. A lot of people have been going outside to eat. And we looked at even getting those little igloo tents so the kids can still eat outside of snack if that's preferred and when it gets to be colder. But I think um, I think more often than not, we've been met with, like, you never hear like the compliments, right? You never hear like, oh, this isn't such a big deal. You never hear that. You hear the the drama of how it has inconvenience people, but honestly, we found ways to make it work. Like we have um different groups that come in, they use the stage as a separate area, so instead of having like a lunch bunch pull out, there's people that are doing um book clubs on the stage and really just keeping the food in that area has I don't know, it's really, I think it's actually kind of helped the school. And then um I was telling Shannon that I found out the school has one of those sprayers that you can go through. It was left over from COVID where you could actually sanitize. So I'll be fogging tomorrow after our big celebration. And um there's also the flu clinic that's happening, so we'll be alright. I'll be at school at two o'clock in the morning on Monday, just to make sure we don't have any yogurt cups spilled or anything that's, you know, got rogue over the over that amount of time, but um I I'm sorry, and feel free to direct people that I that do have complaints or concerns back to me. I'm happy to um show them pictures of what anaphylaxis looks like and why we're gonna avoid it at all costs, so.
Has the community been alerted to the the reason for the?
We've had the, we've had the emails, we've had the newsletters, like, I mean, I that's how I know about it, you know.
And people are still complaining?
I had a thing, somebody had put a finger for one child.
Yeah.
We had a kid with a blueberry allergy at Cap City when I was in DC, she was hit an anaphylactic blueberry allergy. We banned blueberries from the school.
Yeah. Cause you don't want the kid to die.
You don't want the kid to die.
So I mean, you know, we are a country, I'm not gonna go there.
I'm, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry that, that, like, again, feel free to redirect people to me if they have. Any concerns or any suggestions, but uh, honestly, it's, it's working well right now. So.
Yes, I'm, I'm in full support of what's going on.
Thank you.
Make that clear, public record.
Um, but again, if it, you know, if that or the other issue or issues that um, come up again. We can um, settle about that, 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 not the peanut issue, but the other issue, if that comes up, we'll, we'll deal with it. Um, in an executive session at some time at a future date. All right. Um, thank you for both of those though, um, Nate. So um, anybody wanna move to adjourn us? It's a kind of a long one tonight.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
All right, all in favor? My UI.
Catalano I.
Heard I.
Jack guy.
Nate, long coat by.
Everybody. Thank you.
Uh, get me out of here.